So let's start out with the beginning. Let's do our, I guess we should do our pledge of allegiance even though we are remote. So, whoop, what was that?
Brenda Heckman.
All right. Oh, Brenda's joining the meeting too. Okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the America.
To the republic.
To the republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Okay, everyone, thank you for being here at the meeting. Uh, I'm going to do a quick roll call. Of course, I'm present. Michael Martinez. Pam Doobie, not Pam Doobie, nope. Uh, Mike Lencioni.
Present.
Rich Young.
Present.
Joan Lewis.
He's on here, but she's on mute.
Okay. Attorney Gunning.
She's on mute.
Attorney Gunning.
Uh, Jeffrey Gunning is present.
Okay. Uh, Eve Gary Vendix. Nothing from him. Uh, okay.
He's a military.
Is he? Okay. Bob Skolkowski. Uh, Dolly Millick. Okay. Matt Bowen, no. Ray, no. Building Commissioner Steve Thomas? No. And, uh, that's it. Okay. So, Joan, I understand that there are, the minutes were not completed. You did not receive the recording.
That's correct.
Joan?
Here.
Can you hear us, Joan?
Yes. Call me at the office.
Brenda, are you in one place?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay, but are you together at the office or are you at home?
No, I'm at home. I don't know. Joan, I would assume she was gonna be at the office.
Okay. Uh, we see her here. Did you say she signed on, Mike?
He's on, she's unmuted.
Okay. Joan, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
All right. I know Joan is supposed to be with us, but I don't know where she's at.
Well, call me.
So, I have nothing. We have no minutes, the way I understand from one of the notes Joan had sent to us. Uh, now, Mike, let me ask you this question. Is, can, are we recording this session right now?
This session is being recorded.
Okay.
So it was the last one, but then Zoom corrupted the file and I send it to their customer service to fix it and, you know, I'm still haven't heard back.
Okay.
You can imagine there. It's wrong.
Right, okay. All right, so I'm gonna try to take some notes for myself here then. Um, all right, so we need to go on to the very first thing in our, okay, first of all, is the adopting our meeting agenda. So I sent out the most recent agenda to everyone on the council, to Joan and Attorney Gunning. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I did that already.
No other comments? Do you have your agendas open in front of you or no?
I do.
Okay. Any additions or corrections, Rich?
Uh, seems to me I wanted to bring something up, but I can't think of it.
Okay. Well, if you, if you think of something as before.
Must have been important.
Okay. All right. Uh, Michael, any additions or corrections?
No, I am good.
Okay, thank you. Mike, how about you?
I'm good.
You're good? All right. Okay, so, uh, let's go on. I'm still, I'm gonna ask again. Joan Lewis, are you, um, here? Joan, are you with us?
Yes. Call me.
All right, I'm gonna try to call Joan on her cellphone and see if she responds to me, okay? Just bear with me for a moment.
That's fine.
Seems to me we had this problem last time.
That's right.
I think you're right, Rich.
Okay, where's Joan?
Probably because I don't have a smartphone.
Hello? Okay, no answer there. I'm gonna try.
Dinah, you finally came here. Dinah? Dinah? Dinah?
All right, I'm not getting a response from Joan.
If you didn't answer the phone.
So, um, I want us to go ahead, because Al is waiting here too. So, um, we have Al Wallace giving us a report on the DNR grant. So, Al, can you go ahead with the report, please?
Sure, thank you. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight at your meeting. Um, we did send some documents out via email late last week. I'm just gonna summarize those real quick and then provide an update on the La Porte County Drainage Board meeting this afternoon and then, uh, next steps coming up. Uh, one of the documents that was emailed out was the plans and specifications for the white ditch restoration project. And that's a typical document that we use for defining, uh, how to do restoration work on the, uh, ditches throughout northwest Indiana. Uh, the key part are the technical specifications, where we talk specifically about what a contractor would need to do in terms of clearing and grubbing. Uh, we've identified several trees to be removed, uh, excavating the bank of the slope. Uh, there's a requirement for any excavation that's being done, they remove it off-site because there's really no room along the top of the bank to place the spoils adjacent to the ditch. So we're having all that removed off-site and we have seating mix. Uh, and then the last two pages of the specifications are really what the bidders will be looking at. We've identified specific quantities of all the work that needs to be done, number of trees, size of trees, uh, total cubic yards of excavation, uh, how to restore the sites. And then, uh, in the bid form, we've got three questions. Uh, we're asking the bidders to confirm first that they have the manpower and availability to complete the project by the end of June. That's when the grant schedule, uh, is up. Also, that the successful bidder complies with E-verification certification and then also that typically in bids of this form, they submit the state form 96 that talks about, uh, their financial capabilities and equipment. Um, so we, we had a public advertisement in the paper twice. Um, last Thursday, there was the ad in the paper and the previous Thursday, so we met, uh, the proper public notice for the bid requirement. Uh, and we have bids are due this week Thursday at 7:00 P.M., uh, at which point, uh, we would be looking to, uh, open them, uh, at the town council, leave them allowed and potentially could review those real quick and, uh, maybe in a position to, uh, award the contract at that time. So those are the bid specifications. Also sent out, uh, image and PDF of the drawings. So we have, um, our typical drawing that shows, uh, the length of the project and along the length of the project, we show what trees, uh, are there that need to be removed. And we've got specific locations of, uh, how to excavate the bank and then put out the stone path at the top of the bank. And then the other two documents that we sent out was back in 2003 timeframe, the county of Michiana Shores entered into a memorandum of understanding with, uh, the La Porte County Drainage Board. So we used that 2003 memorandum of understanding as a template to prepare the current one. Uh, so, part of the formal action that I would be asking for the board to, uh, perform tonight would be to approve the memorandum of understanding, uh, between the county of Michiana Shores and the La Porte County Drainage Board. Uh, appearing at the drainage board meeting this afternoon, uh, I had sent reference documents to the board last week, the drainage board. They were, uh, very interested in the project. They recognized the, uh, benefits of the project done in 2003, 2005. So they unanimously approved the memorandum at the drainage board meeting this afternoon at 2:00 this afternoon. Uh, with that approval, they, uh, will provide $36,000 in drainage funds that I have collected for white ditch maintenance as part of a local match for the coastal grant. So by their action this afternoon, uh, they approved the memorandum of understanding and then also that included, uh, funding in the amount of the $36,000. And in terms of, uh, the bid announcements, we've had requests from several different contractors, uh, for the plans and technical specifications, uh, NCAP, uh, GARIUP, uh, Wider Concerns, Delta Three, uh, Grimmer Corporation. Uh, I work with, uh, most of those entities and know, uh, of the work they do in northwest Indiana, so if we get some competitive bids from any of those, uh, bidders, uh, that should work out real well. Kind of a brief summary of where we're at on the Lake Michigan Coastal Program project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Al?
Yeah, Rich Young here. I have a question. Al, um, when we entered into the other grant back in 2003 or whenever it was, we had to take care of our part of, um, the creek from, um, El Portal to, uh, what's, what's the other end down there? Um, anyway. Yeah, Oakdale. Um, is any of that in this memorandum or is that a different issue? In other words, uh, the county said we were responsible, like if any trees fell at it and all that.
Correct. So that was included in the current memorandum, similar to the one that was done back in 2003. So, uh, the town is coming up in a few years to the end of that initial 20-year, uh, maintenance program. And there was brief discussion about the head of the drainage board where, uh, the county will still be, um, taking in funds for maintenance for white ditch that could be used for some of those activities. So we, we duplicated the memorandum from 2003 with that 20-year maintenance requirement and, um, looking at how the first section has held up, um, it looks like you guys have done really well on the maintenance, uh, bank of stable. And for this design, we just used the same design as last time. So it worked out well, so we really didn't want to change anything.
Okay, thanks, Al. Um, I was at the meeting today for the white ditch, for the drain, at La Porte County Drainage Board. And actually, Tony Hendricks, the surveyor, had contacted me yesterday regarding this, not just this extension, but further work on the creek as well. And he said, "One of the things that we might consider is taking over handling everything that has to do with our creek, uh, the ditch in shores. And we would then be given the money that the, the county collects for the maintenance of the ditch. And we would apply that money the way we needed to apply it going forward if we agree to do that." That's not a question that's come up for us right now, you know, today, but that is something we can consider. Whoop, this is Joan, just a minute.
I can't get in with the numbers you told me. Call me at the office, because this is gonna be a long meeting and I don't know if I'm gonna have enough help. Thank you.
All right, excuse me, that was Joan. She couldn't get on with the numbers. She couldn't get on with her computer. She couldn't get on with the numbers I gave her. I read off the numbers that were on our, on the invite that my, that you sent us, Mike. Could you please try to call her at the town number like you did last time around? I think you tried to connect that way. That's what she said.
I don't think I did. She's, she's on it. I mean, she's on here. Her name's in the participant list.
I don't know why. I'm not sure why. Maybe does her computer have audio? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I was trying to talk to her, so.
Um.
I, I can try with the numbers again and repeat the numbers for her.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
It looks like, it looks like she might be doing the, her computer, unless one of these numbers is hers, a cellphone.
The number for the office is 219-874-3193.
Yeah, I didn't connect her before. I think you called her and just put her on speaker.
Well, she was, she was on speaker with us, wasn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, then I guess we can do that now too.
I mean, she could call into the number with her phone, though. I don't under.
Well, she tried, she says, but she couldn't get through. So I could give her, I'm gonna give her the codes again. And she did use 312-626. Hi, Joan? Just a moment, I'm checking, Mike is checking something, I think, over there. Uh, the numbers that we have to use for you. You should be able to call in on your own. It should work.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Al called, Al, you called in, you're on the phone right now too, but, uh.
Yep.
Let me find the, let me find the appointment again.
Well, I called in and she gave me the number.
Okay, I'm gonna do this again, then I'm gonna give Joan the number. Hold on.
Oh, she can't.
There's like 20 numbers, so she can call. Are you ready? Well, Dinah's doing it.
Right? Take a 31. Yeah, I got this too. I gave him my last number he gave me. 928. Nice. Let me set the last five. And password. Okay. That's it. Okay. Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Okay, Joan's gonna try again. I think she got, one of the numbers was wrong on the meeting ID.
Won't work unless you get all the numbers right.
No.
Okay.
Says I'm in.
All right, Joan, welcome. All right. Okay, well, Al's gone through his report for us and I assume you've seen the, you know, the information, the paperwork and so forth. So, Al, was there anything you wanted to add just for Joan? I'm sure you've been in contact with her, but.
Yeah, Joan, I just kind of went through the different documents and brought the town council up to speed that the drainage board did approve the memorandum of understanding. So, uh, the next step is to have the memorandum of understanding before town council tonight.
Thank you, Al.
Okay, so, now, do we need to, actually, at this point, we need to make a motion, uh, and to second the motion and then to vote on whether or not we accept this, because we are going to be giving money from our funds to work on this project. And it is, it is a project that we've been working on for several years, so it's something that we planned for. So any questions, gentlemen and ladies?
I move that we, uh, accept, uh, vote in favor of this, uh, current memorandum for the grant.
Okay, do I have someone to second this?
This is Mike Lencioni. I'll second it.
Okay, Mike Lencioni seconds. Richard Young moved, Mike Lencioni seconded. I need a vote. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that was, do a roll. Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Okay, Mike Martinez?
Aye.
Richard Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. And we still don't have our Pam, so it's gonna be 4-0. To accept the proposed, uh, work and proposed document, the memorandum regarding the development of the farthest west portion of the white ditch restoration project. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
The money has been appropriated. So the money is there. It was appropriated two years ago, so it's been two years in a row we've had it. And luckily enough, the past, uh, clerk treasurers have saved some money, so we don't, aren't gonna have a budget crunch.
Good.
Good.
Sounds great.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Joan.
You're welcome.
All right.
Dinah?
Yes.
Uh, Jeffrey Gunning here. Is Al still on the call?
Yes, he is.
Okay, uh, if I could ask a couple of questions.
Please, go ahead.
Al, uh, did, did you or your office put together the contract for the, uh, bidders who received the contract?
Uh, the last Friday, I think it was, I emailed to Joan, uh, potential draft contract for this work.
Yes, and you, you, you or your office put that together?
Yeah, and we used, uh, Joan had provided the specifications for the refuse bid and contract that was recently done. So that was the template and then we just kind of tailored that to more accurately reflect the ditch restoration type work.
Okay, I have two questions. One is, um, if there's, if the bid is, or if the project is broken up amongst bidders, would that require the issuance of one or more contracts or two or more contracts? Or do you contemplate that there will just be one successful bidder?
Uh, that would be the case. I would contemplate just one bidder to do the full scope of work.
Okay, and my last question is, if you know, um, in the force majeure, uh, major, uh, paragraph, which is number 4.4, that talks about failure or delay in performance due to factors beyond the control of the parties. Um, it, it lists those things, you know, fires, acts of God and that sort of thing. There's a specific provision that says, um, or government orders. And I'm wondering if that language was added by you or anyone on your staff or if, that is standard language that is now used?
Uh, we did not modify that section 4.4. That was, uh, came right out of that contract we used at the template from the refuse.
Okay, okay, so that, then that was boilerplate. All right, that answers my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm trying to reach Pam as well right now. So she's on the phone with me, hopefully, looking at the numbers where she can get on via phone. She couldn't get on via computer. So, thank you very much, Al. Just, just a minute, everybody. I've got Pam here. Hold on, Pam?
Yep. Now, thanks for all your hard work. This is Rich Young.
You're welcome. Appreciate you guys.
Yes.
It's a great project. We'll open the bid Thursday, then we'll see where we go from there. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Bye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, hopefully Pam will join in on, on the meeting. I called her, she said she couldn't get in. Okay. So, Al, thank you very much for your explanations and, uh, and for the work. Oh, he's gone already? All right, well, you know, we thanked him. Now, let's go on to the next section. Joan, okay, uh, we have nothing on job descriptions yet, right, Joan?
Nothing, and I don't, we won't be able to do much on them anyway because we, we have, we haven't met.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Now, uh, we're gonna speak to you again, Joan, as the clerk treasurer regarding the vouchers for any invoices and claims. So I hope everybody had a chance to look at those vouchers Joan had sent through.
Yep.
Okay, let's, let's start with the B. Okay, with, uh, Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay.
$3,471. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, five, 101, I'm sorry, 105 for rental of the hall. Town of Long Beach for the Police Protection, $4,735. Republic Services for Refuge, $3,776. Access for La Porte County for a videotape, $500. News Dispatch for printing the ordinance 2020-02, $471.72. Department of Water Works, $9.49 for Kincaid Park and $9.49 for the garage. Brenda Heckman for her travel, $33.64. Comcast for our telephone, I'm sorry, not telephone, it's for the internet, $79.69 for grand toll, $13,191.03.
All right, so, uh, I need, does somebody have any questions about this?
The only question I have, I wanna go into a big detail. Seems like a lot of money to pay a darn newspaper to publish something. There's gotta be a, and I remember Mr. Gunning mentioning before, if we had, like, designated four posts or something where we could post things, 'cause that, that's a waste of money.
Yeah, that is a lot of money. Mr. Gunning?
Hi, mine.
With, with regard to, um, the posting concept, that was, would actually be five locations, but that would something, be something that would be required for the future. As to the present bill, um, I, I know the newspapers are supposed to limit their charge according to a formula that appears in the statute and it might be worth confirming with the paper that they adhered to that, um, pricing formula. Otherwise, um, that, that is about, that sounds about right to me for the. Otherwise, that, that is about, that sounds about right to me for the cost of the glass.
I'm not saying it's not a right figure. I'm just saying it's a waste of money. There's got to be a better way.
We normally don't have them there. It's expensive. Just covered a whole page.
Yeah, well. Okay, well, I, I move that we accept the May 2020 vouchers as read.
Okay, Rich Young moved to accept vouchers as read. Who seconds?
I'll second. Michael Martinez.
Michael Martinez seconds. All right, all in favor, please. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Okay, Pam Doobie?
Aye.
Okay.
Hey.
Yeah, she's on. All right, Dinah Dumbrous, aye, and Rich Young?
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Okay, so the motion has passed and please pay these vouchers, Joan. We will sign like we signed last time around, okay? And then send it back to you.
Sounds good.
We all sign our individual ones.
Yes, you can sign your individual.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Joan.
Okay. Let's go to the payroll taxes. Payroll taxes for the payroll.
Joan, what are you reading all this? We all have it in front of us. I don't have a question. Huh?
The public doesn't have it.
Yeah, well, how much of the public is on the phone? One?
No, but they're going to get this on the internet and also on the TV.
All right, if you feel you need to read it, read it. I was just going to say, let's just pass it.
Okay, let me read it. Employer FICA, 9/25/19. Payroll taxes withheld, $211.88. Payroll FICA, that's what withheld, 9/25/19. Payroll, $402.27 for state tax. And local tax is $108.04 for a grand total of $2,570.57.
Okay, thank you, Joan. So I need, anybody have any questions? No, if not, then I need a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Mike Lancioni moves to approve the payroll. Who seconds?
I'll second.
I'll second it. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, Pam Doobie seconds. Now, again, roll call. Mike Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Pam Doobie?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrous, aye. So that's all approved to accept the vouchers and to pay the payroll expenses. Thank you, Joan.
Okay, now let's go to the April additionals. And on the April additional, we have NIBCO electricity for the streetlights, $36.53. Garage for heat, $74.59. Electric for garage, $75.51. The grant for, to Christopher Burke for the engineering portion, $4,037.50. And DNM excavate for cleaning out the line, water line in front of the garage, $205. Wex Bank for, which is Shell, for fuel, $39.15. And the general office, we are paying a fee so we can use Adobe. And that is $16.04. So a total of $4,484.32.
Okay, are there any questions? If not, then I need a motion to accept these claims and vouchers.
I'll move.
I'll move to accept.
Okay, Rich Young's moves? Seconds?
Michael Martinez will second.
Mike Martinez seconded. Uh, Rich Young moved, Michael Martinez seconded, the additional vouchers for the month. I'm, all in favor, I will take a roll call. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Pam Doobie?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrous, aye. Okay, all in favors, so vouchers to be paid. Thank you very much, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is it for the claims right now, Joan, and then we'll talk further if there's any other kind of questions, okay?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, now, the next item on the agenda, which is 5D, and annual appointments of commissioners to various boards. Well, we still need to make, fill one more position for the park board because Jean Paxton did resign, so she said she'll help out with various things and, but for this year, she's going to step, she's stepping down. So anyway, I wanted to just check again. We did have someone who was volunteering. Mike, is Sonia still on?
Uh, sure, she's still on.
She's still on, okay. So we've got Sonia Lancioni who had volunteered to be on the park board in one of our positions. So the, it comes to us now to fill this position. So do I have anyone, could someone please move to appoint Sonia Lancioni to this position?
I guess I'll move.
I'll move.
All right, Mike Martinez moves? And then who will second?
I'll second.
Okay, Rich Young second. So Michael Martinez moves, Richard Young seconds, the nomination of Sonia Lancioni to the last vacant park board position. All in favor? Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Pam Doobie?
Aye.
Richard Young?
Before I vote aye, I thought the park board made their own appointments.
Well, at the park, at our first meeting of the year, Dolly Millick said that Jean Poulard wanted to come on and nominated him at that point. But we now have an empty position because Jean stepped down, so I'm not sure. We need to approve. We have to approve. So Joan?
What, what do you mean, Rich?
I thought the park board picked their own members.
I don't think so. I think they're appointed.
Because I know I was appointed by the town, by the town council.
Well, I thought they picked them and then the council maybe approves them.
No, I don't think that goes that way.
Mr. Gunning?
Uh, no, the park board does not have an appointment to power, and it is up to either the town council or the town executive.
All right, I stand corrected. I'll vote aye.
Okay, thank you. And I approve as well, so all, there are five votes in favor, so Sonia Lancioni will be the fourth member of the park board then. Thank you very much. Okay.
Diane, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is Jean still the secretary of the BCA?
I believe she is, yes.
So is she going to take over all these clerical duties I'm doing?
Uh, Joan, I'm, you know, let's, we, let's talk about that farther down for the other things. Okay? And, you know, we can, we can answer that, ask that, you know, as we reach towards the bottom, okay? Of our, of our agenda.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now let's do 5E, which is Flood Plane Administrator. Ray has nothing to say, you know, with regards to that currently, so no report from him. NERC, which is our next point, that would be mine. And I have really nothing to give. NERC has not been meeting. They're hoping to have another meeting this week already. All commissioners should be present. It sounds like they're trying to do it in, in person. I don't know how they're going to do it in that facility because there's a lot of people. So perhaps part of it will be, you know, online. So maybe some will be there, some won't. So then I'll have some more information to give. But currently, I have nothing else to report from NERC. For the Drainage Board, you heard the report from Al Wallace. And as I mentioned at that time, Tony Hendricks, who's the surveyor, suggested that we take over the entire ditch maintenance responsibilities. And then he did indicate that the La Porte County Drainage Board would then collect the money as they have been collecting, and they would set this money aside for us to use for, for any kind of issues that we had with maintaining the ditch. So this is something to, you know, consider, whether we want to do this or not. We can go back, because the suggestion was made to us, we can turn around and go back to them and say, hey, this is what we want to do. Any thoughts from anybody?
Yes, I have a thought. Is that the entire ditch?
Then it would be the entire ditch.
The one that's, okay, from Pocagin on over to the Michiana border?
Everywhere, yes, uh-huh.
Not Pocagin.
Well, yeah.
I mean, El Portal.
El Portal.
The whole thing. All from one end of town to the other.
I said it includes that, that part is what I asked.
Yeah.
Yes, it does, Joan.
I don't know that that would be to our advantage because we don't have the equipment.
Yeah, how do we have the equipment or the manpower?
We don't have either.
Okay, just to make it clear, they hire out, they put out bids to someone to do the work. Okay, so which was something that we would have to do then on our own as well, is to send out, you know, put out for a bid. Because they don't have, they don't send their own, like, they don't have their own equipment to do it. They're always putting this out for a bid. Very often, Al, Alsef has done the work here in Michiana Shores. He happens to come in generally with the lowest bid. And he's been doing a lot of work. Now, remember for us as well, Mick Wolf has been doing work in our part of the ditch for us. But this is, I'm just telling you what they, the suggestion came from them for us to discuss. We don't have to make a decision now. We could do a little bit more research and we can address this again the next month. I'm just telling you what had been suggested to me at the time. Is it something for us to think about?
I'd, I'd like to think about it.
Okay.
We would need to know.
Research on it.
Okay.
How much money they're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, so these are the questions we can ask?
Yeah. It, it's worth looking into.
Okay.
Yep, I think so.
All right.
Dinah, if I can offer a comment?
Please.
You would want to be, have it specified probably in a writing of some type as to any limitations that they would want to impose. Because what I heard you describe made me think immediately of the Village of Michiana, Michigan, water contract that existed for 40 years. It required them to do an accounting and then tell us how much money was available. And then the town of Michiana Shores would have to send in a project that they would then pay the contractor. And, and I do not know how that worked over the years, but we all know that in more recent times, then the whole system failed. So to avoid that, you would want to have an agreement and a written understanding that would ensure that the town is either okay with any limitations or rules that they would impose, or to specify that we either get the cash annually, or it goes into a fund that we can draw upon without limitation. If they're going to retain control over the money, then they're going to have to keep the money in their accounts. And that may not be a desirable setup. So you might want to see if they're willing to put something in writing.
Okay, thank you. That's, thank you for the suggestions. Great. Any other questions on this?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So then we will, thank you for your suggestions, Mr. Gunning. I will definitely take that into account and put something, some inquiries together to them. All right, now, there was no report. I called Dolly, left her a message. She did not respond to me. I don't have any kind of a report on the park board. Is there anything, do you know anything, Rich?
Uh, the only thing I know is we can't meet. And I don't know if anybody noticed, there is a new bench at the corner there of Oakdale and El Portal.
Yes, I did.
It, it isn't even our property, but we've doctored it up a little bit.
Okay.
And, and I, I waited for the fire department to cut the whole, when I put the other bench in, which by the way, was donated by Frank, gee, I never, De Giacomo or something like that.
De Giacomo, right.
Yeah, he was a nice guy. And the bench was falling apart. It actually broke. So I had wired it to the ground so that nobody could steal it, but I didn't, didn't realize, so I went to replace it, that I had put a combination lock on it and I couldn't. I, I don't know where the combo is, but I couldn't even turn it because it had been so, you know, rusted up. So I ended up cutting it finally. And so Dolly's going to owe me some money from the park board, but I, I think I paid $89 for the bench. I don't charge for any labor.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Rich.
Thank you.
You do a lot of stuff that helps the town look very nice, so thank you. All right, so I'll be in touch with Dolly then to see what they're going to be doing with regards to the park board.
She could be at her sister's over in South Bend.
Ah, okay, maybe. All right. So I know that we don't have, I've got attorney contract under here, and that was just to finish up, you know, anything we had with Mr. Gunning. And I'm assuming Mr. Gunning will, you know, supply us with that, the unpaid bill yet, right?
Uh, yes, that and I, I did say that I would do additional work, but it would have to be by event or by project. And you had indicated that, that you might have me do the work or the initial work on the BCA meeting, at least the one that's scheduled or coming up. So I will present you with a letter agreement document that will address that.
Okay, that, that sounds good, because I know that Matt definitely wanted to make sure that we have someone present, as well as Howard had expressed the same thing to me as well with regards to the plan commission, when we have someone coming in with plans. Okay.
Well, he's just trying to get the city to take care of.
That's what it sounded like, so that's why I wasn't making any kind of promises or any kind of, kind of comments on it. Um, Mr. Gunning, since you're on, I said, how wide the law is when somebody calls and, and says that tree might fall on my property and my car.
Well, it deserves taking a look at. Once somebody has given notification, then the town is on notice. So that if the town does not take action and something happens, it could, could be liable. If it does take action and it remedies the problem, then of course it, it eliminates that possibility of, of liability. If the person who examines that determines that there's, there's no harm or danger to be had, then the, the town could go with that. However, if, you know, that limb fell or the damage resulted, the, the town would still be responsible for that. If, if the town is without funds or the ability to make that determination by a voice vote, I think you can acknowledge the existence of the problem. And if, if you have a plan that says we can't get to that tree right now, then that may absolve the town of some liability until it does get to the tree.
Okay. So in other words, just to be clear, we can now, basically discussing this now and then make a motion that we will look at it in the future? Or is that what you're saying?
Well, if, if the, if the plan that we have presently is one that's, that quotes a total dollar amount of all the projects that we're going to be doing, and if that is now committed and we're out of funds, then we should indicate that we acknowledge the complaint that we've received. We don't know if it's true and accurate or not, that, that particular limb or that particular tree is in fact in danger of following, fouling or... falling or breaking away. Um, but if it is and we've, you know, allocated funds for the, the current projects and have no more money, um, then we, we can acknowledge the, uh, the, the complaint or the, the claim that's come in, that it's a danger and that may provide some immunity for the town.
Okay. Now, can this also be done at, for instance, the next meeting after we have our road commissioner take a look at what it looks like?
Um, sure. And, and so I think if you, i- it might help the town, protect the town if something happens in the meantime, if there be a motion that the street commissioner or the designated individual, uh, you know, check that out for future action.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. So do we need a motion? I'm sorry, Rich?
Before you make the motion, how did this guy tell you the town owned a lot? Joan would know more than me. She knows, uh, because we own a lot of lots.
It's all on the Beacon site, Rich. I just was looking at it myself. I didn't even know we had a lot down there.
Where, where?
Do you own it?
Yeah.
I was muted here for a while.
Okay, Joan.
It's just south.
Dreamwald.
Well, it would be just north of that location.
Yes.
And it's south of Debbie Mansfield, Mansfield's house.
Yeah, we, we, we own it. I just looked at it.
Yeah, I looked at it on Beacon as well earlier.
All right, so I, I just wanted to say we need to make sure we own it before we're taking this guy's word for it.
I looked at it right away after the phone call.
For my record, it's south of Dreamwald?
It's on Dreamwald.
On Dreamwald.
The house is on Dreamwald and the lot is just north of 415, Dreamwald. And I'm saying Beacon that it's ours.
And on the east side of the road.
Yes.
Right. I own another one down there too, Rich, south of that one about, you know, uh, before you get to the turn.
Okay. Well, we own a lot of lots. A lot of people, single lots, they just donated them rather than keep paying taxes because they couldn't build.
That's true.
Yeah. I just, I, I was just going to say we need to make sure we own it before we.
Yes.
But Bob should go out there then.
I'm sorry, Joan, is that you?
If that's the lot, it's by Debbie Mansfield and, um, I believe the gentleman next door is Smith. There is a lot in there. There's a lot across the street we own too.
Yeah, well, that's the lot we're talking about.
Okay.
Between Mansfield and 415, whatever.
Yeah, that's ours.
Okay. All right, well, then I need a motion that we're going to request the road commissioner to check this out.
So made.
Rich Young moves. Second?
I'll second.
Pam Doobie seconds. All in favor of having the road commissioner check out this, uh, question? Michael Martinez?
Hi.
Okay, Mike Lencioni?
Hi.
Pam Doobie?
Hi.
Rich Young?
Hi.
Dinah Dumber's aye, so all five approve. Uh, so police, I mean, road commissioner, Solkowski, please check this out for us and let us know at the next meeting what's taking place with the tree, okay?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Dinah?
Yes? Yes.
I was on, I don't know how I got unmuted, but I did and I missed the, uh, volunteer department. Did Bob give one?
Did who?
Bob Solkowski. Did he give you a report on, on the fire department?
No, there was.
No, he didn't have one.
I got it.
Oh, you do? Okay, excellent.
I got one.
Okay.
Uh, on the Michiana fire department, um, activity report for the month of April, the hours that were spent at meetings, nineteen, and that was due to COVID. I'm sorry, the meeting was canceled due to COVID nineteen. So there's no special training, no public relations, a meeting's away from home. Uh, they did have four calls. One of the calls was on Jaybird Lane, one at Michiana Drive, Powhatan and Dreamwald. Yeah, two fire alarms, propane leak and a medical call. That's, that's it.
Okay. All right, then thank you very much. Okay, so now let's move on to the plant commission and, um, there was no meeting this past month. And I know that, um, Howard is working on, uh, also initiating Zoom meetings. He's got, I guess, a program too and he's looking into some stuff on that. Um, for the plant commission, I could just relate that the coffees did reach out only in the sense that they were sending through various documents, uh, with the assumption that they were going to be on a meeting, you know, this month. Um, Steve, uh, Steve Thomas related to Howard and to myself that he was in communication with the Coffey Hartman, uh, family with regards to a couple of issues he found on the plans that he thought they need to correct before they bring them up. I believe Matt also took a look at some of the plans and he had some questions as well. So Howard wrote to the coffees and said to make sure that they provide three copies, not just digital, because it's very hard to look at them on a smaller screen, to see adequately and, 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 you know, to, to know what you're looking at. Matt and Steve both said that they prefer having the larger copies given to them and they want them a week in advance prior to the plant commission meeting so that there's time to look at them all and make some determinations about anything like that. So that they're supposed to now, again, it was repeated to coffees, that they gather all of their documents together with a completed permit application, submit that one week before the next meeting that takes place in June. So that's it right now for that plan. Questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. So, um, on to the BCA. Uh, Rich is not on here with me today, uh, but Matt Bowen, I know, has already related that he's got one request that's coming in and it's coming from Ralph Fox with regards to, uh, a petition to the BCA to get a variance. Uh, and this will be the first one that comes up. So, um, and as I said, he's, uh, concerned about making sure that we have legal representation for the town when any of the takeout, take, take place. So the first meeting is set for the twenty-first, for the BCA, twenty-first of May.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
I have been sending the information I have, uh, through the internet or whatever you want to call it. Anyway, to Matt, he's got Ralph Fox, he has Jean Shanahan and her husband. And then there's one that came in today and that is for the Willies, Jennifer Willies. They're in my office.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I only knew about, uh, Ralph, so I didn't know about the others.
There's another one too that I got.
You have one that came to you for the BCA?
No, they're sent, they had some questions I answered.
Oh.
They're going to send their check in to Joan and they're going to reach out to Matt.
Okay. All right, well, he's going to handle who's coming up and how they're going to organize it, but there is going to be a meeting on the first, twenty-first, uh, for the BCA with regards to the various people who are requesting right now and just general information that the BCA needs to discuss amongst itself. Okay, um, with regards to the website, I have nothing in particular new to, to relate with the website. I add information as it goes and with regards to any kind of announcements generally from, uh, the governor's orders and so forth with regards to COVID nineteen, um, any kind of police things that were sent to us, I forgot to put on the website. And, um, I posted information about the short-term rental agreement, the, uh, the building permit that was, um, approved, uh, the most recent one with regards to explanations that the SBOA needs. Um, and, uh, a BCA document, Matt Bowen is still, I submitted it to him since he's looking at it, uh, with regards to the various steps people should follow for the BCA.
Sounds good.
So otherwise that's about all that I have. And then I did get more people signing up with regards to an email list, a database. That's it for the website. Any questions for that?
Did you get the minutes on?
Hello?
Did you get the meeting minutes on?
Posted, yes.
They're on, good, thanks.
Uh huh. Okay, and then, and like I said, the, uh, a new, a new, uh, building ordinance, I removed the older one and the newer one is put up, the one from twenty-twenty April. Okay? So if we can move on, I'm going on to seven, which is grants. Joan, do you have anything else to add about, uh, grants today?
I think Al covered everything, uh, as of today, that's the only grant we have.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much then for all your hard work, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's move on to unfinished business. Uh, and that brings us to a couple of things here. One of them has to do, that's going back to our short-term rental ordinance with regards to a couple of terms or points that were put in this. And I'm going to give this over to Mr. Gunning to, uh, to do a little quick job for us here on that. So, Mr. Gunning?
Um, yes, I'll, uh, first explain that I do not have any type of a draft, uh, to present this evening. I have also suffered from some massive computer problems. And, um, I, I wanted to make sure the town did just a little bit of, of cleanup work. Um, I think that was initially put together and done, um, that translated, or I'll say decoded, some statutory citations into, uh, the words and, and the, uh, specifics that were represented. Uh, ultimately, there should be, um, similar to a, a codification ordinance, just a, a cleanup ordinance so that there is one, uh, final clean copy that does not include those, um, objectionable citations. And, uh, since I have started on that, I, I will conclude that, um, but I won't be able to do anything for this meeting.
Okay. All right, the, thanks for reporting on that and then we'll be in touch with regards to that, uh, going forward. Um, okay, anything that you can share with us on the ongoing Uregga case?
Um, yes, that, uh, case, if you recall, had us with an obligation to file a response to the affirmative defenses that, uh, include some allegations and, and claims against the, the town, uh, by May first. And, um, I had left one voicemail message for the opposing counsel, um, prior to that and, um, did not hear back other than, uh, the original enlargement that produced the May first due date. Um, he, we traded voicemail messages wherein he said that they'd be interested in, in talking, uh, settlement, but we never got anything after that. Um, so just days before the May first, uh, due date, I had, uh, left a message, again, talking about settlement and then talking about, uh, the necessary enlargement that I was indicating was, uh, in part due to his lack of response and to the other things that I've mentioned before, that the interrogatory answers that were provided by the defendant, Bob Uregga, were, uh, insufficient, uh, or evasive and that may be subject to, um, a motion for sanctions, uh, by the town against them. It may result in additional interrogatories being issued. I also informed them that, um, for more than a year, there has been overdue, uh, the response they owe the town for the production of documents. And in my opinion, that puts the defendants in a precarious position, uh, because I included that information on both the insufficiency of the interrogatory answers and the overdue, um, request for production of documents response in the original motion for an enlargement of time that brought us to May first. I, um, included those again in the latest motion, but just before it was due to be filed, I did get a telephone call from the Uregga attorney, Martin Alford. He indicated that they, uh, were in fact interested in, um, in making a, a proposal. My expectation is that's going to result in, uh, the ping pong effect where they'll make a proposal, we'll make a counter proposal. Um, I reminded him that, uh, we're both obligated to present any proposals made to our respective clients and have the client respond accordingly. Um, he indicated he would then, uh, get something to us, uh, something firm in writing, uh, from his client and that he would also endeavor to get a response together on the request for production of documents. And, um, we talked about the insufficiency of the answers to interrogatories. Um, I supplied him with a, a new copy of the request for production of documents. Apparently his client has never, never either mentioned it or provided it to him. And, um, he suggested that I send him a copy, a, a new copy of the interrogatories. And I told him that, um, I would have to work off the initial response that his client, uh, made. And it was sort of unclear and left uncertain as to whether or not he was going to be talking with his client anyway and he'd see what he had. He told me that he would prefer to work off of a, uh, a clean document. And my inclination was not initially to send that, uh, to him. Um, my computer wasn't allowing me to, uh, scan at that point in time and I'm still back in that position again where I have to go back through my, um, computer provider to, to get that reconnected. But, um, I was told that I would have something by tonight's meeting and, uh, as late as an hour and twenty minutes or whatever it was before the meeting, I, I left, uh, or not before the meeting, before, uh, uh, five o'clock and I left a message with, with his office, uh, indicating that I hadn't heard anything and that I'd like to present that tonight. Um, and urging that he call back and received nothing. Um, I did send out to the council members by email, a, uh, a copy of my email to him that contained the request for production of documents. And, um, I sent out a copy of the motion for an enlargement of time. In the conversation I had with attorney Martin Alford, he indicated that he would agree to a forty-five day enlargement. And so I went with that even though I would have preferred a sixty-day enlargement, uh, for two reasons. One is it makes it easier for the court to just approve it. Um, and in our, our current, uh, circumstance with the pandemic conditions, the court is not necessarily up to a full-time staffing. That's my understanding and this is hearsay only, that, uh, that the judge and, um, the staff, um, are sort of taking turns on going in and out of the office. So there's, there's not a lot of great continuity and they have other matters, they're more urgent that do get their attention. So, uh, just yesterday, um, I did receive the, uh, the order that it was granted. So that gives us a deadline of, uh, June the fifteenth. the, uh, the order that it was granted, so that gives us a deadline of, uh, June the 15th to, uh, supply an answer or seek another extension. Um, in my communication to the council members, um, that was over the internet, I indicated that there's an assortment of, of alternatives that, that we could, uh, pursue. And I, I think for tonight's meeting, I'll sort of leave it at that, unless you have some questions, which I may or may not be able to answer.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Gunning. So now, any questions from anyone? Oh? Alright, so in other words, just if I understood correctly, you know, you've got, uh, that 45-day enlargement, so when does that, what does it need? Again, when is that going to be up, and what is gonna be our next steps then with regards to this enlargement?
Well, June the 15th, um, there's a number of things we can do. One is, uh, just to wait until we hear from, uh, Ma- Martin Alford. Um, if we engage in good faith, um, negotiations, then, um, we're, we're well positioned to get another enlargement if nothing can be firmed up by that, uh, date on the 15th. Um, the, the next, uh, council meeting falls outside of the executive order that says the local government buildings are not, uh, to be open to the public yet. So that would take us to the June 2nd Plan Commission meeting to have that be an electronic meeting, or a virtual, uh, meeting. Um, it appears that because of the five-step order, the executive order and plan from the governor's office, that, um, I'm, I'm trying to remember what the date was, and I think that might have been, uh, June the 14th, um, is when, under the current plan, the, the public buildings are expected to start to open up. Um, so the, the first allowance is, uh, what the executive order looks like that comes out on June the 2nd. There's a possibility that the governor could reverse the five-step plan as it pertains to local government, which would mean that we would have our town council meeting from Ishana Shores on the 9th. Um, and that would be in time for the council to make a determination. Um, to, uh, counter, uh, propose or counter-demand, uh, some form of settlement, or respond, uh, to their, their, their proposals. Um, I, I know from the discussion, and I expect that, uh, their initial proposal is going to be one that's probably more in effect to, uh, test our resolve, you know, our, our position with the matter. Um, the, in, in a normal situation, if I were continuing to serve as the town attorney and not as special counsel, um, my town attorney contract always gave me discretion with regard to cases like this, um, to do what I would think would be necessary. Um, so what is embodied in the communication is the concept that, uh, one of the things that we could do would be to issue some new interrogatories to ask, what is the basis of some of these allegations they made in their affirmative defenses? Um, if we don't get the case, uh, resolved, we might be well-served to do that, um, before we file any type of reply. Um, but I know one of the stated goals of the current and new town council is not to spend any more money on this case, if, if that's all to be avoided. Um, but if, if we don't get it resolved by June the 15th, we're, the responsibility is on our end of the case to file a new enlargement, motion. Um, if we were to file interrogatories, is the, the dominant thing that we would do, uh, we would have to do that by the end of this week, so that it would be issued and served on the opposing party within a timeframe that they would have to have that back, um, to us before the 15th. And then if we don't have it resolved, um, all of the undone things are theirs. And so we have that position to use with the court to say that they haven't done anything in the meantime. Uh, if they have done something in the meantime, and it doesn't settle the case, then we're still obligated to file the enlargement. My thought is, since we are gonna have to file an enlargement anyway, unless it gets settled, uh, which we wouldn't know until, um, June the 9th. And if their first proposal is going to be a hard-nosed proposal to gauge our reaction and response to it, then it's not gonna be settled by the 9th, and therefore, we're gonna have to do the enlargement on the 15th. If I have authority to issue a set of interrogatories, you know, by this week, um, then that puts us in a position to, uh, point to them and say, everything that's undone is their fault. So the, the court may say, well then file your motion for sanctions against them, or the court may readily, um, grant an additional enlargement. But that, I think, would be the fifth enlargement of time. Um, the, the court may not care on a case like this, or a court may, uh, be aggravated that it's not moving faster than, than it has been.
I don't think I would categorize fast movement with this in any way, shape, or form.
I agree.
Lord.
Alright, any other questions and comments here? Alright, so what do we recommend for Mr. Gunning to do? Do we agree, or don't? And Mr. Gunning, you know, just go ahead. Counsel, I need comments.
Dinah, I have to be honest, this really, I lost us for 10 minutes or so.
Oh.
I got cut off. I don't even know where we are.
Oh, okay, Mr. Gunning was talking about the Uregga case.
Is this like under number 8 on the agenda?
Yes, it's the one under 8B, the, you know, the old ongoing case.
Well, I don't have A or B.
Oh, okay, well.
What was A?
A was just, uh, ordinances and resolutions that Mr. Gunning believes we need to clear up for our short-term, uh, rental ordinance as we go on. But nothing done this month, we're gonna do it another month, so.
Alright, so this is B.
Yeah, so B is the Uregga, the ongoing Uregga case, is what we were talking about. So, Michael, anybody else? Any comments on this?
What I'm afraid, back, I'm Rich Young again.
Yeah.
What I, uh, initially said when this came up. Uh, Mr. Gunning, they're basically taking this as a weakness, you think? And gonna play hardball by demanding money or something?
Um, that, I think that's my expectation on their initial proposal. Um, and, and of course, from our perspective, that's a total absurdity. Um, the options before you tonight are either, uh, to authorize me to issue some interrogatories, or to do nothing and just wait and see what response we get from them.
And what was your recommendation?
Um.
A or B?
I, I think, I think it would help, uh, the town, and it would, in, in the long run, help us to speed it up by issuing the interrogatories. And, and that puts us in the position of being able to, uh, blame every, each and every delay on them.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts from somebody else? I know that Michael Martinez said something, and I thought.
Attorney Gunning, so we're saying that if we do the latter of, of the one that we proposed, um, after a certain timeframe, then the responsibility falls on us, or was, was I wrong on that?
Re- repeat the question.
I said if the la- there were a couple of choices, outside of the one you just said. Um, if it goes past the deadline, I think you said by the end of the week, or, or it's coming up soon, does that mean that the responsibility falls on us, it's kind of backing our court? Just trying to go over the notes that you sent in the email while you were talking.
Oh, um, no, I, 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 but it, it does give, um, from the, the judge's perspective, uh, you know, the judge is always gonna look at things and say, you know, who, who's responsible for the delay? And while 90% of it would fall on the defendant, um, the 10% would be, uh, the judge could say, well, why didn't the town go ahead and, uh, you know, issue its interrogatories to position itself to just answer these late filed claims and allegations in the affirmative defenses? Uh, the judge may not ask that, the judge may look at the case and, and say, this is one of those awful cases, and just grant an enlargement of time. If we do the interrogatories, we're, we're both one step, uh, forward in the prosecution of the case, and we've left nothing undone. Um, so all of, everything is, is in their court, so to speak.
Based on that response, I would say go with the first, uh, the, uh, issuing the interrogatories.
Okay. Alright, I mean, I know that sounds, you know.
Is that a motion?
Sounds like it to me.
I'm gonna hear anyone else's concerns or questions. I mean, I don't have any, so I want to make sure.
I agree with you, so if that's a motion, I would, I would second.
Alright, so Mike Martinez, you know, moves that we authorize? Did someone else start to speak? I'm sorry. No?
No.
Okay, so Michael Martinez, uh, moves that we authorize Mr. Gunning to issue the interrogatories. Rich Young seconds that motion. Uh, I will now call for a vote. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Uh, Pam Doobie?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. So we have, uh, uh, agreement. Uh, everybody is in favor of authorizing Mr. Gunning to issue the interrogatories in the case, in the Uregga case. Alright, thank you for your report, Mr. Gunning, and we will, of course, gonna be ready to hear from you if you can hear anything from them, obviously. Okay?
Thank you.
If nothing else there then, I'm gonna move on to the next, uh, section, which is the enforcement officer, and this was Rich Young was going to give us some information.
Well, I had approached, uh, the person we had talked about, the ex-chief of the fire department. And I gave him a copy of the proposed requirements and duties. And, uh, he looked it over, but he, he came back to me about a week ago, said that his, his cardiologist basically recommended that he not do this. So that's where we are. He would have been a good one, because he's a good man, he's a, he's a good speaker, and he's got patience. But, uh, and after the first year, and maybe a year and a half, then we would have this under control, but he, uh, he said his cardiologist recommended he not do it.
Okay. Alright, now was there anybody else? Did you know of anybody else that might, um, you have suggestions, or does anybody else have suggestions with regards to somebody else? Rich?
Yeah, I have suggestions, but I'm waiting to hear from anybody else.
Oh.
Nobody else?
Okay.
Um, I don't have any. To go ahead, Rich.
I thought Matt would be a good one. Matt is very diplomatic, you know, he's a businessman, works down at Pioneer. And, um, he would be good, but nobody's approached him. I, I could see if he would be interested. And, and then outside, now, neither Mike, I believe, knows Rich Pliski. And I don't even know if Dinah, you know him that well.
I don't know him as well as you do, but you know, I know.
Oh, well, he would be a good one, because not, there's a bunch of reasons. Number one, he basically is working from home full-time now. He's been an insurance salesman forever. Uh, he was also the number-one insurance salesman in the state of Indiana years ago. Uh, I, I've seen a picture of, uh, the governor of, uh, Indiana. Uh, he, he's tough, and he wouldn't take any crap. And he's in town all the time, and he still travels the town. And, um, he was a councilman. And back in the day, when he was a councilman, he was probably the only, and Pam can back this up, probably the only businessman we had on the, on the board. Uh, so that was an advantage. But he wa- he would be a good one. I think Matt would be a good one, but I haven't, now Rich told me he would do it. And if those of you that ran, well, we all ran, obviously, uh, Rich Pliski, uh, came in sixth, I think, right behind me.
Okay, well, thanks for the, you know, the report. Does anybody have any kind of questions and comments, and you know, should Rich go on and talk to him somewhere, or are you gonna do something else? What's your thought, gentlemen and madam?
I think he should keep talking to him.
Both of them?
I think Ri- yeah, both of them. I think, I, I would rather see Rich Pliski, but, you know, I, I think Matt would be just as good also. They're both good in, in different ways.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're good.
Mike or Michael?
I think we, I think that's fine, Rich, but I think we need to post it to, um.
Well, I'm not against that.
And just solicit that in from the general populace, maybe there's somebody, uh, that would be good that none of us talk about right now. I mean, uh, we could put it on Nextdoor and see what we get, we could post it elsewhere, uh, but, uh, you know, why don't we, why don't we open it up?
Mm-hmm, okay, thanks.
Correct, for me, for my, but we have not completed a job description. I know we were on the kind of final stretch, but has that been finalized? Because I mean, if we're gonna post it, I would love to show them kinda, you know, what is expected of this position.
Hey, Mike, Rich Young here again. Uh, one of the, one of the worries that, uh, Jim Imes had was, I think, under job description, there was something about other duties assigned. He, he was very leery of that. So, I, I, I don't.
Just a minute, hold on, hold on. Uh, Rich, are you done talking? Because now I heard two voices.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with either Mike, but that was a concern.
Okay, Michael Martinez, you were gonna speak?
Well, I was just gonna ask, I mean, he said all other duties, did he, did he mean specific, or, I mean, I don't really wanna.
No, he didn't get specific, but that's the thing. In, in your, um, job description thing, it, it didn't get specific. It just said other duties assigned to him by the.
Oh, okay.
So that was his concern. Or his wife's concern for him, I forget. But it was, uh, but you, and I told him right up front, this was just presented, it was nothing in writing, it was nothing, you know, concrete.
Alright, well.
But he, he really would have been. But he, he really would have been ideal, he really would have been, for those of you that don't.
Unfortunately, he doesn't agree, you know, that's, that doesn't do us any good, um, so.
So, just to kind of tighten this one up, uh, sorry, just to tighten this one up, uh, and knock out two birds with one stone, can we go ahead and post it, and then if you wanna talk, tell me if anyone agrees, talk with those two individuals, Bowen and then also Plisky, if they're interested, once we post it, they can apply like everyone else, so, you know, we're not, everyone's going down the same path.
I'm not against that.
Okay, and when we speak about.
But we need, don't we need then, like Mike Martinez is saying, to solidify the, the, the job requirements?
Uh, yes, we do, we should be.
And that committee can't meet, or doesn't meet.
Well, you know, it has not been because it's been something that doesn't, that works in person, but, you know, it doesn't mean that we can't take a look at it, and, uh, and talk to one another by phone the way we're talking right now, with regards to, you know, Brenda and Joan, uh, uh, maybe just working on it myself, and then, you know, if somebody else wants to still pop in on it and work, maybe we can pick another person and just look at this, just literally, everybody, you know, the council, to look at what Michael had put together, um, make your comments on that particular form, what you think belongs or doesn't belong, and then, you know, share it with the rest of us, that we could actually, you know, make a decision.
That's a good idea.
You know, another, getting back to Matt Bowen, uh, he is on the BZA, as a matter of fact, he's the president, right, or the chairman?
Yes, yes.
So, and, and this new ordinance goes through the BZA, right?
Well.
So, I, that could create a problem.
That, of course, that would, because the BZA is going to either grant or not grant the variance, so to be the inspector and to, or the enforcer, and the one that grants variance would be a conflict of interest, so, um, I think that it's something that, uh, he would have to determine, does he want to stay on one or?
Yeah, one or the other, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking.
And we haven't come up with a, with a price yet, or a, a, a fee, or a payment, and I, I had asked Jim what he thought, and he never got back to me with that, but it's a shame, he really would have been a good one.
Well, but that's.
So, to tighten this, to close this one out, because I know we're approaching nine already, um, do we wanna just kind of pass it through each other via email, make some shit, make some feedback, and chat changes, and go from there, and then also, I thought Joan had said that with this position, it would be about maybe twenty dollars an hour, or twenty-five, maybe that was off by a few bucks, uh, I don't think anyone had, was any, anyone was opposed to that, uh.
No, no, we pay the roads, people.
I, I think the biggest issue was finding the money.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, why don't we give up, we need to put a date on it, though, okay? So, instead of putting it off, uh, I, I know that Michael and Mike are both working, and if, you know, you have time, maybe over the weekend, today's Tuesday, maybe by, uh, Sunday night, everybody could actually have taken a look at this, you know, put on any of your suggestions and share it with everyone else, so that we could then make a determination sometime, you know, at the beginning of next week, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, so, post something, all right? Everybody agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And what I'll do is, just so everyone has the latest document, I have it in my inbox after this meeting, I'll send it out to everybody, so everyone has the first, the most up-to-date copy, and it's on top of your inbox, so you're not spending time with it.
Excellent, and make sure Joan, make sure Joan gets it, make sure Brenda gets it.
Yeah, you gotta make sure Joan gets it, so us not computer-smart people can get a copy.
Yes, and then, see, Joan is in that committee, Joan is in, you know, Joan and Brenda are on that committee for the job descriptions, so they have to get it. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam President, Madam President, if I may offer, um, the, the thought that for the purposes of the posting, you can come up with a document administratively, so do that over the phone in the fashion that, that you've discussed, however, to make the determination and the decision on the final job description, uh, that is something that would, could only be done through the council meeting, in a public meeting, so, the, the posting is just an administrative act, and that you can do in that fashion that you described, but the actual, um, job description, uh, for its final conclusion, uh, or for hiring or contract negotiations would have to be approved by the council in a public meeting.
Okay, thank you, good. Okay, thank you for that, uh, piece of advice, then, okay, great. Okay, I'm gonna move this very quickly through those last couple of things, so, um, one, is there any kind of other news, Rich, on, uh, wood debris removal, any other kind of questions or comments from anybody?
No, we talked about that, that guy that was worried about a tree falling.
Well, that's the only one, but anything else, otherwise?
Oh, there's always stuff we can pay for, uh, Joan would have to remind us how much is allocated, um, there is a small branch in, or a small tree in the creek, see that?
At the park.
Yeah, well, it is in the park, it's, it's the town, the park has kind of taken over that.
Well, I saw the DNR down by the.
The next, the next mark.
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw the DNR down by the creek, looking at over yesterday, or the day before, looking at the branches that are down.
Okay, well, I had walked the creek about ten days ago, ten, twelve days ago, and it was, um, the, there are some branches that are down, I took photos, I, uh, sent them to the drainage board, I also sent to Mick Wolf for the part that he does, uh, he's got some agreement with the drainage board that he works on, so.
Yeah.
Um, but I was wondering about anything else that was in the public right of, in the right of way, in the public right of way, that still had to be done, or we finished?
Well, like I said, we always have, and I'm sure, if Bob's still on the, on the meeting here, he would back me up, there's, there's always stuff we could have done, I don't, what it says from pub, public property, is that, you mean town property, or?
That means the town property in the town, you know, whatever we're responsible for, but my question is, has all the work that was supposed to be done before, that was contracted, has that been accomplished?
Yeah, we traded off the tree that was supposed, that Bob and his, uh, son had marked at, uh, Dream World and Shadow, I think, and they took care of that fallen tree along Hiawatha, and that was a big, big issue. I don't know if Joan got a bill yet from Mick for all that?
No.
Well, he did it, they did it.
Okay, well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject, Rich, I saw Bob shaking his head with regards to that, so is that the only tree, or is there other work that you thought wasn't done, Bob?
There's quite a few of the trees that were marked that have never been touched.
Okay.
Well, a couple of those were on private property.
There's only one that was on private property.
Well, one, and then the other one is in dispute, because he says it is, and whatever.
Own the property, how can it not be a town tree?
Okay, well. Gentlemen.
We own the property, it's a town tree.
Oh, well, you're right, that one that I'm talking about, you're right, but it was the ones over there by Rollis's property.
All right, so, gentlemen, let's do this, let's find out what should have been done, if it hasn't been done, okay, so that we make sure we remind before we make any kind of payments to any work, that everything has been accomplished, so that, let's check up on that now, and get it ready for the next meeting. Very quickly, let's move on to E, I thank you for this stuff, but let's move on to E, and quickly, uh, just a couple real fast, uh, I know Mike Lencioni looked into talking to somebody about the, uh, tr- stumps and the tree trunk removals, I've spoken with someone at the, um, I've spoken to, uh, Jessica, I've spoken to a, I've spoken with someone at Amtrak, um, I have not spoken with anyone in CSX, but it may really be very difficult, I know Mike Lencioni said that as well, uh, with regards to trying to get that stuff off of Old Grand Beach Road, so, that's just a short response from me here, and I don't know if anyone wants to throw anything else in here now, but if I get more information, I will share it. Mike, did you wanna add anything?
No, it's, uh, it's a conundrum, that it isn't going anywhere any, anytime soon.
Yeah.
I might go out there with my own chainsaw, cut some of the small ones down, uh, so.
Okay, well, the big thing is removing some of those huge trunks that look like they're dead people in there, so, anyway, um, okay, very quickly, on, uh, leaf pickup, I've already been in, I got in touch with Long Beach, Bill DeFuniak there, he sent me their, the RFP that they've used, so I know the information, like, already also contacted about five different kind of companies that deal with regards to this, collected a lot of information, I will put it together for us, it's late today, so I'll have to send something out to everybody via email with regards to what I discovered, okay, and what I found out with regards to organizing a week pickup that would start for us in the fall, and what we need to do to get this done.
Yay.
Okay, so, so that's, that, that's quickly for me, I'm gonna, I'm running through this real fast, so we can get stuff done.
Nice work, Gunning.
Okay, let's move into nine, town cleanup days, generally, we pick a day sometime and made a cleanup, now things are beginning to loosen up, COVID-wise, uh, do we declare certain weekends or something like this, or a weekend, or some days, that, hey, everybody, let's get out and clean up, including picking up papers on Old Grand Beach Road, and on all the other roads and so forth, what do you wanna do?
We always pick the date, and it was usually before Mother's Day, like, you know, maybe the weekend before.
Well, we're, that's passed, okay, that's passed, go now.
Well, I know that.
Okay, what do we do now?
Well, I, I just said we picked the day.
I think, um, feedback-wise, this weekend's too, too short, uh, for notice, next week is Memorial Day, uh, from, uh, so maybe, what, two, three weeks out, the weekend after Memorial Day would be the earliest.
So, like, the first weekend in June, maybe?
I mean, yeah, but then again, yeah.
Really, is, is two weeks from now Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's either that, or we literally just declare two or three weeks that are cleanup days here in Michiana Shores, and just request everybody to start cleaning up everywhere.
Right.
We can encourage that anyway, um, rather than one day, if someone picks something up.
Yeah, that'll work.
All right, and then we could just keep pumping it up on that next door, that even encourage people to come out and start cleaning, maybe, um, and then otherwise, you know, I had a couple other topics, meetings, submissions, and boards, and then, um, what is it, and a question about the DNR grant opening, that's taking place, I understand, from Joan at seven PM on Thursday. Pardon?
Is any of the council gonna be present, so they can vote on it?
You need three of us, so either, I don't know whether you want us to be present in, uh, in body there, three of us, or we would all have to be present via the telephone to vote?
It probably would be better if you're here, we would have enough room to stay six feet apart and wear masks, gloves.
Okay, all right, um, well, then, in that case, I know, Rich had said yes, and now Pam had said yes, uh, for me, it's an if, because Ray starts, um, an infusion treatment on Thursday, and I don't know if I'll be home in time right now, so we may need to ask Michael Michael to step in at that point, okay?
Yeah, I've got a commitment that.
You do? Okay, how about Michael Martinez?
And the first time, Ray, seven PM on what day?
This would be this Thursday.
Fourteenth.
Two days.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I'm gonna be home, because Ray has to be there at eight in the morning, and they said about eight hours, so I should be home.
Okay, tell you what, uh, if you don't mind, Dinah, put me in as an alternative, uh, things do, I, I should be home, uh, but just let me know ASAP, so I can.
I will, okay, thank you. Yeah, that's great, thank you so much, I appreciate that, okay, so, you know, other than that, um, I think the rest of the things we can address, anything anybody else has, let's leave until the next meeting, unless you have something that's really burning today.
Um, Dinah, either you or Joan better comment or say if I'm committed.
Or you are committed, it's because that's the clock.
Yeah, remind me.
Okay, Pam, we go.
One of you call me, and one of you call Pam.
All right, great. All right, I'll call, okay, I'll call Pam.
All right, where, where are we with Mr. Gunning's contract? Is that? Is that pressing, or is it not?
No, that, my, uh, term as town attorney has expired, um, I agreed to be on, in the meeting tonight, uh, first, because I'm special counsel on the litigation case, and, uh, I figured since I was gonna be on the call anyway, I could, uh, I could offer counsel for tonight's meeting only.
But I had suggested at the last meeting, that we somehow entice you to stick around.
Well, that, that's very nice, but I've declined, so, uh, with, with the exception of, uh, apparently the BZA meeting on the twenty-first.
So, you're not interested in staying on as our town council?
Rich, you're having no luck in getting anybody to stay on with these things.
All right, well, you know, we'll see about what we can do with Mr. Gunning with regards to that, but I did have one suggestion, and I almost forgot to ask, um, because I have collected a number of names of attorneys, uh, recommendations, both from Mr. Gunning, some from Jody Woodsdown at AIM, uh, Teresa Massa has picked up some names for us and given them to, I have, uh, some attorneys that I've been in touch with as well, I know there's a gentleman that Mike Lencioni had mentioned, so, what I would like to do is have, um, some of us who are on the town council, I don't think all five need to work on this, but if we have at least two or three people working on this, where we could start getting, put together the kind of questions we'd ask, start talking, and then, uh, when it comes time to doing any kind of interviews, if anybody's interested, then we get the council together for interviews, so, um, is there anyone who would like to work on this, looking for an attorney thing?
Yes, I would.
Pam, okay, Pam is interested, okay, I know that I'm interested, anybody else? Yeah?
Don't everybody raise their hand at the same time?
All right, that's, yeah, it sounds like school, right, okay, well, we're gonna get started, if somebody else wants to join in with us on this search, okay, for calling and interviewing, let me know, all right? Um, thank you very much, everybody, and if no one else has more comments to make, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Dana, Dana, I just sent out the latest version, I, this is Michael Martinez, I sent the latest version out of the code enforcement, so, uh, please review it, due date is this Sunday, five seventeen by five PM, if I don't get, receive a response from you, then I will assume that you have agreed to it.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael, can you send that to me also?
Is that Bob?
Yeah.
Of course, you were the first person I typed in.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mike, any second?
I'll second it.
Rich Young seconds, all right, all in favor of adjourning our meeting?
Aye.
Yay, aye, all aye, okay, thank you so much, everybody, for your time, everybody, take care of yourselves, and would be.
Night.
Yes? Thank you, Mike.
Good night, thanks.
Good night, everyone, thanks for organizing.